Regular meeting of the Stokes County Board of County Commissioners for January 9th, 2023 at 6:00 PM. The first item on our agenda is the invocation, and I would ask Commissioner Cox if she would deliver that for us.
Sure. Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, as we come to you in prayer, we'd like to thank you for this day. We'd like to thank you for all our many blessings. We'd like to thank you for allowing us to be here tonight to do the business for the county. We'd like to remember a lot of different people in our community who are sick right now and are battling a lot of different things. We'd like to pray for families, the Bowles family in Pinnacle that have recently lost loved ones and other numerous families in our county who have recently lost loved ones. We ask that you make this meeting profitable and that we would make the right decisions. And we ask for travel mercy on the way home tonight. It's your name we ask this. Amen.
Amen. And the next item is the pledge of allegiance. If you'll join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on our agenda is approval of the agenda. Can I have a motion for approval of the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
No, approved or disapproved, no. Okay, agenda's approved. The next item on our agenda, I'll open the floor for public comments. Did we have anybody sign up, Amber? Okay, no one for public comments. So the next item on our agenda are comments by the manager and the commissioners. And I'll start with Commissioner Cox for her comments.
Great. I'd like to welcome everybody to the meeting and thank you for being here. And for those that are watching online, we thank you for watching and taking an interest in what we're doing here. Like I said in my prayer, we'd like to remember several families in our community, the Van Bowles family and others who have lost loved ones, not just last week, but since Christmas. I know of several families dealing with that, and we're remembering them and several people that are in the hospital right now that are sick, and our prayers are with them too tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Cox. Commissioner Woods?
Happy New Year. We'd like to welcome everybody here and online. I go along with what Commissioner Cox said about the sickness and once it's lost a loved one. I had the tough, I think one of the toughest things ever done was going to the Bowles visitation on Friday night. My heart goes out to that family. We lost a good businessman and fireman, and he was one of my Eagle Scouts, so it really hurt. So I'm gonna let it go before I lose it.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Wood. Commissioner Chandler?
Good evening, everybody. Appreciate everybody tuning in on the YouTube channel and also being here in person. I'd like to start off recognizing a couple of department directors that recently retired effective January 1st. David Sutterith, who was the Planning and Zoning Director, and Tony Hill, which is the District Resource Director. They both deserve our appreciation, serving the citizens of Stokes County. And also, I don't want to forget about their families. I think they deserve recognition too, because as we all know, you know, when things are going good, things are going good. And sometimes things get a little bit choppy. And so it's not just the work that they do, but it's also going home to the families and their support. So again, I want to remember them and wish them well in their next endeavor. Second thing I want to talk about is in December, in the Stokes News, there was an article, it's also in the Mount Airy Times, it was on the Westfield Fire Department, Volunteer Fire Department then, award ceremony. Six members of their fire department, they were recognized with an advanced fire department certificate. And what that is, it's along the same lines as the Advanced Law Enforcement Professional Certificate, and it's a combination of formal education, experience, and also in-service training. It's the highest level, the number of hours. I think it's a great achievement, even if you're working full-time, like say for a full-time fire department or police department, and you go and get that type of training and that type of dedication. But for volunteers to do that, still they're holding down their regular job. I think that's great, and that's part of the culture here in Stokes County. I think it makes me proud, but I want to recognize them. And also, Westfield is kind of unique. I know there's a couple of other fire departments in the same situation to where Westfield serves Surrey and Stokes. And my understanding is that if a fire goes off and the district, the service district in Surrey, the Stokes firefighters, the ones that live here in Stokes County, they still respond and vice versa. So I think that's really great, not only in our community, we got volunteers fighting fires and also going to medical and rescue on our own property in our own county, but also we're sharing that service with the adjoining county. So again, I want to make sure that they're receiving the recognition that they deserve. And lastly, I just want to say that this National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, especially in today's trying times, I think we all need to take just a minute and recognize that our law enforcement professionals, they go out every day, they leave their families at home, they work holidays, they work all night. A lot of times, they're the only government entity that's even available to work, 2:00 in the morning, Christmas morning, when someone needs help. It's a lot of times, it might not even be law enforcement related, but they always know they can call 911, or they can get a response. But this is an appreciation that was started in 2015, and it was established by a variety of organizations. So please keep them, and if you see a law enforcement officer, please thank them for what they do. And then lastly, Amber, if you would just, on the deal with the retirement of David and Tony, can you just check and see if we have a county policy on recognition of county employees that retire?
I can answer that. There's not a policy. It's always just been handled through the departments and the wishes of that department head. Some department heads choose that they don't want any kind of formal ceremony, some want to have a party per se, maybe be recognized, have a retirement party. But in these situations, these individuals did not wish to have any kind of gathering according to their departments.
Then what does the county, what does the county say the department director wants to have? I guess, I don't know what you consider a party, but wants a party, so I mean, what do they get?
In the past, it's been a plaque that's been provided, and then usually the different people in the department will sign up and provide food, things like that, snacks, just a typical party. But the plaque is usually what the county does.
The last time I remember us doing one was maybe for Julia.
Uh huh.
When she, which we did have something upstairs, and everybody was invited, but that's what she wanted. So I guess it's been up to the individual in the past. But I don't see any problem if they would want to come, to at least come to a meeting and recognize them and give them a plaque, even if they didn't want the other hoopla. I think that would be a good gesture.
Yeah, absolutely.
Think that... You'd never do that?
We'll put it in the mail to him.
I think if you have an official policy, I think that it gives the objectivity that it's an invite for everybody. It's not a, and I'm not saying there's anything different between Tony and David or anything like that. That's not my point. My point is, is I think that we need to recognize our employees that retire, and I think it needs to be a policy, and we just, we go through and we follow the policy, whatever kind of options they want to do, because I mean, if they don't want to get recognized, that's fine. If they do want to get recognized, I'm just speaking from past experience, not here, but in other places where it gets political, it gets office stuff, and I just think it takes that out of the arena, and then plus, everybody knows that, hey, we want to do this for you. I mean, it's not a lot, but I think it's the intent, and it just puts it out there that we're willing to do that, and if you don't want it, that's fine too.
I mean, you can probably concur with that as well, Commissioner Morris, because you've been in this role, but typically the department's planning for their department, because we are responsible for whatever department it is. You have to be careful about how you use the county funds for something like that. So it's up to that individual department to provide the food and things like that. So if you don't have a larger department, I guess, planning that, we might not even know that it's a wish or not, but it's typically been on the department's doing that within themselves.
Well, I would even, I mean, someone that's, you know, retired from the government service, I think that there should be a budget for retirements. I'm not saying you have to bring in steak, but there's certainly nothing illegal or not proper about providing a cake, you know, I mean...
Yeah, but administrative procedures and policies, right? I mean, to me, that would just be like an administrative procedure type, something we could add to clarify. So there is like, we want to do this for you if you'll let us.
If you want.
And put some funds in there.
And aside some funds. I would be okay with that.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, all right. That's all I got.
Oh, about a party.
Thank you, Commissioner Reddall.
Thank you. It's good to see everybody tonight. Thank you for coming out. Anyone watching on YouTube, I want to say thank you for being a part of our meeting tonight. I'm wanting to wish each and every citizen here in Stokes County, I hope you have a good 2023 year. 2022 brought forth many challenges to us in many ways, as far as health challenges especially. Many people, I don't want to name just one person, because I know several that have passed away in the last two weeks. That has affected even here at the Government Center, people in the communities that I know of. It's been a tough month or two here for Stokes County as far as some people that I've known, and I'm sure the rest of the commissioners have known, that have just passed away, and that's always a hard thing at holiday time on your family. It's tough. Anytime is tough, but especially during the holidays. And I also want to just not thank just the law enforcement, but I always, as Commissioner Chandler noted, I like to thank all of our first responders, law enforcement, EMS, fire, everybody that's involved, because I'm gonna tell you, it's like he said, during the holidays, when it's New Year's Day, Christmas Day, and most everyone is at home celebrating the holidays with the family, they have to be on, they have to be ready to go on call, on duty at that time, and that's tough. They may not even get to spend a special day with their family, because I think everyone remembers what happened at Blues Creek over the holidays, and it took two or three days. And it took all of our first responders to work together to make that situation come to a finality. But to everyone that's here tonight especially, it's the first meeting of the new year, and always, there's a lot of things ahead of us this year as we approach budget time here in about two months. And just want to say thank you once again for being here tonight, to all our commissioners. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Reddall. As far as my comments go, first back to the thing with the two department heads, during my time here, we've always given a plaque to people when I was county manager, as well as elected official. And I think we, these two guys kind of retired in a hurry on us here, especially David. He was doing the paperwork right till the end of 40, decided to go, but I think we definitely need to do a plaque for them, and then fix these administrative procedures where we can give folks the option to have some kind of a party, but we'll make them take a plaque whether they like it or not. We'll mail it to their house if we have to.
And in town's past, I think we would have, I've been a bit distracted with my mother-in-law's sickness that happened this weekend, and I got that news, I've been dealing with that since November, and so I didn't really have a chance. They gave me that notice, or gave that notice so quickly that I didn't even think about it much.
Exactly. The other thing, I want, first of all, welcome everybody that's here and watching us on YouTube or live stream. I want to talk just a couple minutes about social media. The, I've had a Facebook page for a pretty good while now, and then when I was running for reelection, I added another one. I forget the title of it, something about re-electing Rick Morris or whatever, but you can kind of tell the difference in the two. Well, I hope I've canceled the re-elect Rick Morris when I tried to anyway, but if anybody's using that for communication with me, please just ignore it if it's still there. I am going to keep the other Facebook page. I'm also going to keep my blog. I haven't blogged for a while, but I have a blog that I put in place for, to basically just put information out to the public. I've used it pretty much exclusively for local government, and it's a combination of facts and information, and also my editorial or political opinion on certain items if I deem I might want to do that, which I'm, and like I said, I haven't blogged for a pretty good while, but I'm gonna crank it back up this week. And that leads me to my next subject, is the article that was in the Winston-Salem Journal yesterday, I think on the, above the fold, I'm not sure, I didn't look at the paper. But I was disappointed, really disappointed in the article by Scott Sexton there. It looked like a hit piece on our county as far as I was concerned, dealing with guns and Second Amendment and fundraising that our school system is trying to do. So I just wanted to kind of go on the record tonight and first of all, tell our school board, our Board of Education, and our superintendent that I stand fully behind what they're doing to raise funds for their athletic teams. And I think in this case, it's the North Stokes baseball team by having, by doing lottery for guns and so forth. I'm glad that we're not like Loudoun County, Virginia, where we have a school board that is not intimidated by such nonsense as what was in this article, and by the woke kind of content that was in the article and the misinformation. I thought it was very disingenuous, a lot of the information that was in the article as well. I hope that baseball team has to print extra tickets in order to raise funds, and I'm certainly going to get some now, I wasn't planning on it, but I am now. And without going, without, you know, talking a whole lot more about it, I'm gonna write a blog this week about that article, and it was to counter a lot of the nonsense that was included in it, because it was, it was, it's just really, really bad, bad stuff, bad information, mainstream media giving us advice that we really don't need from them. So be looking for my blog, I'm not sure which day I'll get it out. And with that, I would go to Shannon for any comments you have.
Welcome, everybody here. I want to just say thank you to everybody that's reached out to myself and my family during this last couple of weeks, and with my husband's mother passing. And I do have to say, I convinced you to do it last time, and I didn't do it to congratulate Amber on the completion of her master's program that she just recently finished. So a lot of hard work for her. I meant to do that last time, I didn't do it. So I want to say congratulations to you. And to thank Amber for all of her extra help this last week or so too, and helping me. I appreciate that a lot.
That's it, okay? Next item on our agenda is conflicts of interest, and I need to read this statement for that. Is that on here, Amber?
Yeah.
That's on the, it's on the computer here, right? It's a second here. It ain't popping up. Let me just ask, does any of the board have a conflict of interest with any of the items that are on the agenda tonight that we're going to discuss, or an appearance of the conflict? Okay, good, that takes care of that. The next item on the agenda is our consent agenda. Can I have a motion for approval of consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second. Is there any discussion? It includes budget amendments and tax office items for approval?
No.
Okay, all in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Okay, the consent agenda passes. The next item on our agenda is the discussion agenda, and we only have one item on there tonight, and that would be the EMS ambulance repair replacement that we discussed at our last meeting. I think Brandon's gonna come up and provide information on that.
Good evening, everyone. I know we all met the last meeting and discussed the two ambulances, did the letter of intent. Then the letter of intent sent into Northwestern Mercy Vehicles, the trucks have been ordered. As far as honest, when they will be here, they hope by December of '23. They hope. So he said, you may want to fix one of them other trucks, and after looking at our maintenance records, our budget since I've been director, 2018, we have been increasing, that's due to the age of the trucks and mileage we're putting on them. So my recommendation is to fix the one that needs the motor, because the rear end had been replaced on that one in April of '21, so we should have several more miles on it. It's had a new fuel system put in. The other unit, I would say keep it for parts, transmission rear end, it has a new rear end that also, 2019, it's got about 60,000 miles on it. So with that being said, I would keep it for parts, whenever we're done with it, we can always sell it on gov deals. They did come out and bag with the two trucks on trade, and to me, $3,500 per truck, we can use parts off of them for the other Chevrolet chassis we currently have, and then get rid of them whenever we're done with them, and probably get maybe a little less than $3,500, but they'll serve our other trucks to keep us on the road. So the other, you know, the letter of intent locks the scene, we don't have to buy. I think it's a smart move, what we done last meeting, to go and get our names on a chassis to be getting them coming to Stokes County at some point. They also said they would do a letter of intent for two remounts, and what a remount is, is taking the old box off of one of our F-series trucks, the four-wheel drive trucks, and remounting onto a new chassis. So with these other trucks we got coming in, whenever they all come in, we can actually start phasing out the Cheroles with the 300,000 mile trucks. And if we want to go into a letter of intent for two remounts, go ahead and get them chassis over, so we can remount our oldest four-wheel drive units, they have about 240,000, one of them has 274,000. And by the time the chassis gets here, they'll have more miles on them. So if you want to do a letter of intent on that, it'll lock in the price of 165,000 per truck. And that will be, my recommendation would be, let's get our name on them. And I'm gonna say it'll be after July, it'll be next budget, along with the, and finance all of them. But in March, you're looking at that 10%, up to 10% increase. So just on the new ones we done last meeting, that saved us 60,000, we're locked in at that price. So if you looked at the 165,000 for, times two, you know, you're looking at a 16.5 increase after March. And it may not be that big increase, but he said no more than 10% generally. So what I'd ask to do is fix unit 10, the one that needs a motor, for the 25,000, do a budget amendment to move the money to go and get the motor ordered, get the dealership to get started on getting it back on the road, and just bring the other one back and use it for parts. And the wrecked unit that was back from November Thanksgiving of last year, it's up there. Hopefully, they're getting started on it. He's gonna update me tomorrow to see where they are, I'm getting it remounted to get that truck back. So any questions?
All right. Y'all go first, Brandon.
So if, reference the mount, putting another mount on the new trucks that we get, so what is the likelihood of, so I mean, you guarantee that that mount is gonna stay intact? I mean, that you're not gonna have to worry about any type of maintenance on it?
No, it's all, basically, they take the old box off, the Chevrolets we have now are on a van chassis. We cannot remount them to a F-series chassis. You can, but they do not recommend it. They have to cut the chassis, do this, and we don't want, we don't want to do any part of that. They basically take it off, basically start from scratch, has all new mounts, everything's checked. They refurbished the whole box, new upholstery, redo the air conditioning, the wiring, repaint it, new flooring, new seats, the child, the child seat in the back's replaced, everything's, basically it's a brand new truck. It's just using the older aluminum shell, the ambulance, new lights, new diamond plate, everything's, you really can't tell the difference between a new one and a remounted.
So then the durability will be just like a new one?
Yes. Yeah, we've been, we've remounted for years. But we're Chevrolet and Ford, we're making the diesel in the vans. We just don't, I don't feel like it's a good idea for us to go to gas. I don't know the longevity of a gas. I don't see us getting 300,000 miles on a gas motor with our idle time and stuff like that. So that's why we've stayed with the diesel.
Commissioner Reddall, you have any questions on?
No, I think that we've made a wise decision to go ahead and do the letter of intent at the last meeting, because it locks in the price.
Correct.
It locks that price in right there. No matter what, it goes up, we've got it locked in where it's at right now, correct? And that's, hey, with the inflation, I'm sorry, the economy, everybody here knows how much everything has gone up the last two years. I don't know what's gonna happen in 2023 now, hopefully with some changes in Washington, part of the purse goes to the house. Hopefully that will help out with the economy. However, I just say, I'm all for doing the letter of intent on the one for the fixing of the motor, is that what you said it was?
Yeah, that'd just be a budget amendment to move money to the maintenance of repair.
Right.
To go and get it, or we can get it back and be using it.
Okay.
Until we start seeing new chassis come in. And there's one other thing on the remount, and the two we've already done, I've looked at state contract, I'm waiting on the specs of the ambulance. I'm pretty sure I know what they are, but I want to make sure it's exactly what we need, and they're state contract dealers. I'm gonna see if we can order a chassis directly and see if it saves us any money on the state contract, just to see. And I spoke to one lady the other day, and I said, I just need to know, when will it be here? And just be honest with me, it's two years to have me, and they're saying, well, 20 weeks or less, but the ambulance manufacturer's doing this every day, and they, you know, they can't say it's gonna be 20 weeks or less for sure, so I don't know.
You're saying it could be the end of 2023 on the two that we've already...
Yeah.
That could be a possibility. So we're looking at possibly 12 months.
Unless something drastically changes, I hope they'll be here by December of '23.
And I think, I don't know how many people observed this past week, and just one more reason to make sure we have reliable EMS vehicles, was the player in the football game the other night in Buffalo, who had a sudden cardiac arrest on the field. They happen to have the AED equipment and everything there with them. they happened to have the AED equipment and everything there with them, that they are, they are cardiac ready at all contact footballs, uh, wrestling, any events that contact, but that gentleman actually had to be brought back two times, uh, and you just don't ever know, you don't want, uh, an EMS vehicle that's unreliable when you need it to get to where it needs to go. It needs to be right, it needs to be no problems, you don't want it to be two miles from the house it's going to and it break down, and then you have to wait for another one to show up, that might be fifteen minutes out. So, I'm all for getting this taken care of. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Hey, thanks, Commissioner Manholt. Commissioner, would you have any comments or questions?
No, I'm all in, because I'm shocked that letter of intent has went out of a lot of companies' vocabulary, and I'm just shocked they're doing this, so you better jump on board.
Well, you know, if we say no, whenever time comes, there's a, there's another county that would take it today.
There's talks, you have any comments, questions?
I just think it's probably wise to go ahead and do the letter of intent.
For the remounts.
Yeah, yeah.
Just to get our name on.
Yeah.
And order.
Right.
So, what do we need to do tonight? We need, what do we need to, need to move to action? Okay?
The budget amendment for doing the repair.
The budget amendment thirty-nine, I think Glenda has a copy because Lisa had to leave of that one for the repair, if we could get that moved to action and approved, and just the consensus on the letter of intent for the remounts.
Okay, so we need to prove those two things tonight in action, okay?
That's thirty, thirty-nine and the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars?
Yes, that is motor and total, total replacement.
Okay.
With no, not remount.
Okay, great. The only other request I have, when we do these department head work sessions that we've got coming up, would you bring a, uh, one, half-page or one-page summary of everything we discussed at this meeting and the previous meeting that you're doing with all these things?
Yeah.
So I can kind of sort it out?
Yeah.
It's confusing after a while.
Yeah, I got it all, I kinda got it all written out there.
Oh, okay.
And if, just please don't forget, you know, I like to look at, because I think we'd save money and we'd be more efficient if we add, so in other words, instead of running with your typical six ambulances, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, I think we need to go to eight, and you rotate.
Yeah.
So we don't.
If, if, if all this goes through, and we got blessed with all Amber truck by the end of December, we can, we can really put them in a truck, whenever it comes due for service, they swap out and get into a, just as good as truck is the one they got out of, and quit running them every day, to try to relieve some of the stress.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Do you wanna see that during the work session too, or budget cycle, during the budget submission?
Um, I like to see it during the work session, because to me, the, that'll give us a little bit more time and probably a little bit more visibility.
Okay.
When we go in to do that. Yeah, when we hit the budget hard, but that'll be our honor.
Yeah, that's a good idea, and we, maybe if there's other scenarios too, just for, at least when we get to the budget submission cycle.
Right.
Just whatever, so, you know, the eight's one scenario, for some other one that makes sense, include that too. I mean, we can look at more than one during the budget cycle and decide which one we want to pick, so.
And this here, I mean, if all these trucks come in together, it would really help our whole fleet.
Yeah.
And we're almost gonna save the money with the remount, because we're, we're gonna have to remount several years now, soon as the Sherbalays are gone. I wouldn't be afraid to remount these box, you know, at least one time. You know, if we're taking our service at a reasonable amount.
We have mounted, remounted them twice before, haven't we?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we would always look at that as well.
Generally, if you want to say, look at it that way.
Okay.
If you have the engine hours, because Ford says recommend your engine hours multiplied by thirty-three miles.
Mm-hmm.
So a truck with seventy-nine thousand miles now typically realistically showing, it should have a hundred and twenty thousand miles on it.
Yeah.
As far as an EMS vehicle.
Okay. That's all I have then, thanks, Brandon.
Thanks.
Okay, we just had that one item on discussion agenda, the, uh, so we'll go to the action agenda, and the first item is the Walnut Cove Lions Park Management Agreement. Can we get a motion on that?
I'll make a motion, we approve.
I'll second that motion.
Uh, is there anybody having further questions or discussion on this before we vote on it?
Are you making a motion to approve the updated agreement?
Yeah, the updated agreement that was included in our agenda, yeah.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that is adopted. The next item on the agenda is our cooperative agreement for Pitzer Road Public Fishing Area and River Access. Uh, that was also included in your agenda for review. Do I have a motion for approval?
Motion to approve the cooperative agreement for Pitzer Road Public Fishing Area and River Access.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, any further questions or discussion before we vote? Hey, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Okay, passes unanimously. The next item is a surplus, surplus tax property, uh, that Linda talked to us about at the last meeting, can I get a motion to approve that?
I'll make a motion, we approve it.
Second.
Any further discussion or questions? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Passes unanimously. The next item is our senior staff work session for January, um, get a motion to approve, I guess, and then we'll probably have a little bit of discussion on that. Uh, so a motion to approve the, the sessions and, uh, the dates, which we'll discuss here when we get going on that.
Make a motion to approve the senior staff work session, uh, for January, and also of the, um, dates.
Second.
Okay, uh, what discussion do you have on that besides, well, whatever you want to talk about, the dates for one thing, whether or not they work or not, I guess is one thing we need to sort out. Is there anything else? Oh, I have one thing before you do that too, Amber, I wanted to, um, if you would include either a separate bullet on the template or, uh, a sub-bullet or somewhere that, that reminds everybody to, each department to bring those three items, I asked for the...
Yeah, I updated the template on the agenda to include that.
Oh, I didn't see it on there when I looked on my computer, but where's it at?
I hear it is.
One of the slots, the very last bullet, I just added to the...
Oh, you added a bullet?
Yeah, added a bullet to it.
Okay, I overlooked that then, I overlooked it then, so my mistake on that. Thank you for doing that. Um, and then the other thing, we gotta talk about these dates and whether they work for everybody or not, we're doing these reviews.
Do you want us to?
I just wondered how many, like, if you need, think we'll need four dates, all of these dates, I, there were some that I had conflict with, and I'll have to go back and look and tell you which one, but, um, go ahead.
No, that was my question, was that many, how many of these work sessions do we think we'll need to get through it?
We based it on, if you met with every department, allowing in four-hour increments, they would take that many dates to do it, if you met with every... I think at least four, but probably five, just to be safe.
Yeah, some of the sessions will definitely take an hour, and some of them, maybe some of them will only be a half hour, but I would think they're all gonna go more than a half hour. When we get the information that we've requested to be presented, and then all of us are gonna have questions, so, I think it...
Probably get away with going down to four or five, and then like Amber said, and then if you see you're gonna need more when that last one's there and not finished, we can always recess, we can recess, anyway recess out again to a, a future date.
Okay. So you wanna, you guys wanna look at five of them tonight then, and then we'll recess to a sixth one if we have to.
I, um, I'm having trouble with, uh, the twenty-fourth one and the twenty-fifth one at the times, um, let's see, the twenty-fourth one is a one to five, which I've got a dentist appointment that day, I would have to move, um, but it's for, to have some dental work done, I think, like a cleaning, I, I mean, I could do like nine, twelve-thirty, or I could do, like, yeah, I mean, I couldn't really make that work unless I just did a morning, and on the twenty-fifth, um, I ca-, I could make the twenty-fifth work, make that work. Um, but the twenty-fourth, because of a dental appointment.
So would you wanna rearrange the time on that date, from one to a different time of day, or not that day?
Twenty-fourth.
Yeah, on twenty-fourth, or not that day at all?
Yeah, I could do the morning, like a morning.
Nine to one.
I, I need to be back in King by one, but I could leave, and y'all could continue that last thirty minutes or something.
We could just make that one nine to twelve that day, if you wanted to, I mean...
Yeah.
On the twenty-fourth, yeah, I could do that, or, or till twelve-thirty, or I could start at eight-thirty, to twelve-thirty, or one, or not one, but twelve-thirty.
Okay.
Whatever you think.
Good with the other date, seven?
Uh, yeah, I think so, I think it all worked out.
Mr. Chairman, for me, I just want to remind you that I can be here in person on the seventeenth, my wife's having surgery that, on the eighteenth. So, uh, the rest of the dates that you select, I'll probably have to just either, uh, call in or Zoom in.
Okay. We'll, we'll try to, Zoom works better than call-in, so we'll try that first, and if that don't work for some reason, we'll do a call-in. But you're good otherwise?
I, as, yeah, I can, I can, as long as I can get to my computer, and my wife is doing okay.
Okay.
Y'all sound like our caretaker.
Yeah, yeah, that's certainly understandable.
Thank you.
Commissioner Woods, what's your schedule?
I'm good.
Mr. Chairman? I'm good, ex-, um, I've got a, a dentist appointment too on the seventeenth at eight o'clock in Walnut Cove, but I think I'll probably be here by nine, it usually gets over with in time. So I, I think I'll just take a chance on that.
You wanna push it like ten to two, to give yourself a little bit of flexibility on that day?
Thirty to one-thirty?
Yeah, nine-thirty, one-thirty.
Nine-thirty to one-thirty.
That'd be for, that'd work for sure. Is that good with the rest of you?
On the seventeenth.
Seventeenth.
In the thirty-first, I've got another doctor appointment in Winston-Salem, but I'll have to move, but I don't really mind moving it, so, if, if these dates are good with everybody else, I'll just move that up one, I think.
Seventeenth, nine-thirty to one-thirty.
Eight-thirty to twelve-thirty, or...
Uh, nine to twelve, yeah, that's what I wrote down. Twelve-thirty?
Nine to twelve-thirty.
Yeah, let's just say nine to twelve-thirty.
Okay.
Which date is that?
That was the twenty-fourth.
Okay.
Yeah, that'll work.
Nine to twelve-thirty.
Okay.
Because I'll change that one appointment I've got on thirty-first, and then I think we're all good to go with these dates. Uh, any, any other discussion we need to do on the work session or questions anybody has on those? I think Amber will need, need you, uh, to be in all of them, if you can, as much as possible to take action items, I think we'll generate a lot of action items out of these discussions, probably. So, were you planning on that anyway, or?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Okay, yeah, as long, as long as we capture those, and I'm just, I'm just guessing that, uh, that we'll probably generate a lot of action items, uh, from our questions and so forth, that we want to get, uh, write them down and, and assign a time to have them done, so we'll do that. Is there any other questions or discussion on this item?
So, are these dates, will you have time, Amber, to get these dates advertised and everything?
I should, as long as I do it tomorrow, yeah, I'll do, I'll make sure it's in the district paper.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else on that? Okay, our next item is District Resource Center Director Recommendation, and I'll turn that, ask Shannon to address that.
There, um, as you know, that Tony Hill just recently retired from the District Resource Center, and we are making a recommendation that we fill this position with Laura Jones, who is here in attendance tonight. Laura has worked with the DRC for, since twenty-eleven, um, she comes highly recommended from everyone in the court system, every judge spoke super highly of Laura, and is super excited for her to continue, to continue that work that Tony has been doing, and she's been right by his side the entire time, so we're, um, very excited that Laura is interested in taking on this position and continuing that work on, and I know she'll do a great job, but we just need your formal approval to proceed with that, and then once we approve Laura, we can post her shoes to fill after that and consider that drop in.
Okay, the, so then can I get a motion to, uh, approve Laura Jones as a new department head for DRC?
Make a motion to approve Laura.
Second.
For the DRC Director.
Any further discussion or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no. Uh, passes unanimously.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just want to make sure, I know we got a motion and a second on the, uh, senior staff work session for January, did we ever get a final vote on that? We got a motion and a second, did we get a vote on that?
I think so.
I think we need one, just to confirm the dates and then the updated template.
Okay, we'll go back.
We already had the mo-, um, Commissioner Chandler made the, uh, motion, and Commissioner Manholt made the second.
Okay.
But I don't think we voted on that.
Sorry about that, we'll, uh, have a vote on that, then we'll go back to Laura. The, uh, all in favor of, of the dates, uh, for the work sessions, uh, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Passes unanimously, thanks for catching that, Commissioner Manholt. Um, now back to Laura, have we voted on Laura?
We did.
We did, right, okay. Take a couple cold pills before I got here, so.
Start a drug test.
Working through this, but, uh, congratulations, Laura, for, uh, appreciate you coming tonight, and, uh, congratulations on being selected.
Thank you, guys, I did the best job I could do here.
I think you'll do an excellent job, having worked with you for many years, myself as county manager and elected official, and, uh, we're very excited to have you take the position. Would other commissioners like to come, make any comments?
Nope, just do the best job you can.
All righty, that, I think that kind of, well, we got one more for action, what was that?
Uh, yeah, EMS, the ambulance repair.
EMS, would you kind of read out what we needed to...
For budget amendment number thirty-nine, which is for twenty-five thousand dollars, and then the letter of intent for two remounts with the ambulance.
Okay, could we get a motion, uh, to approve the letter of intent?
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion, but I'm not gonna try to reword everything Amber just said, but exactly what she just said, I like that motion.
A second. Any further questions, discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. All right, I think that now concludes all of our regular business, except for a closed session. I think we have some folks in the audience we need to make a photograph with before we go into closed session, is that correct?
Well, you can, if you want to take a quick break after, um, Amber reads the rationale and you go in, we can take a quick break and do that during the break, if that's okay with you.
That'd be fine. Hey, could you read your rationale for closed session, please?
To consider the initial employment or appointment of an individual to any officer position other than a vacancy in the Board of County Commissioners, or any other public body, or to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, and fitness of any public officer or employee other than a member of the Board of Commissioners, or of some other public body pursuant to General Statute one-four-three-dash-three-one-eight-dot-one-one A six.
Motion to enter closed session.
Okay, could we get a motion to enter closed session?
I'll make a motion to enter closed session.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Okay, we'll be in closed session. Oppose, no. Okay, we'll be in closed session.
May not be worth watching. Audio, video, both we have?
Yep, we're back.
Okay, we are now back in open session and I think we have a couple of motions to make. Why don't we start with yours Commissioner Chandler?
I'd like to make one motion, since we had a vacancy in the Economic Development Department that effective on December 12th, so it would be a back pay situation. I recommend that we, Tori Mabe, who's been doing the acting duties during that timeframe, that a step in be given to him totaling $1,000 and it'll end upon the time of a new Economic Development Director being appointed. And then I don't, do we deal with this motion first and then I-
It's per month.
Per month.
December 12th.
Okay. And just to clarify, the step in is $1,000 a month from December 12th until the new Economic Development Director is named.
Okay, and in the same motion can we do the other one or we do separate?
I'm not sure.
Okay. So, no, just do one. Okay, just a second. Anybody have any further discussion or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Okay, passes unanimously. Your next motion please.
I'd like to make a motion for the Planning and Zoning Department Director position that is currently vacant, for a stipend to be also given to the Acting Planning and Zoning Director, beginning on January the 3rd until such time as a new director for planning and zoning is made, and that stipend also is $1,000 a month.
Effective January 3rd?
Effective January 3rd.
For Kim.
For Kim Oberstree. For Kim Oberstree.
Okay, having a motion, second.
Second.
Any further discussion or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Okay, passes unanimously.
All right, I have a motion.
If you would do the last motion for the night.
I make a motion that the Board of County Commissioners appoint Mr. Eddie McGee as the interim director of the Stokes County Economic Development Department, not for a period to exceed one year from the date of appointment. Mr. McGee will continue with his Arts Council Director duties during this period. For performing the additional economic development duties, Mr. McGee will be compensated with additional $20,000 to be added to his current salary. During this one-year period, Mr. McGee will be working closely with Tori Mabe, who will conduct a bottoms-up review of the Stokes County's Economic Development Organization and processes, and will execute the day-to-day operations of the Economic Development Department. And Tori Mabe will receive an additional compensation added to his salary in the amount of $5,000 for his additional duties. Mr. McGee's appointment will end with a set of concrete recommendations to the county commissioners on how the board should proceed with the economic development function in Stokes County. That's my motion.
Okay, you have a second.
We'll second that motion.
Okay, under discussion, I would just comment that the reason we're doing this tonight instead of waiting to the next meeting, which we would normally do, is there are some pressing economic development issues that Mr. McGee needs to address. So, that being said, is there any other questions or discussion?
Can I clarify this one thing? Will that be effective tomorrow, January 10th? Will that be the effective date?
Yeah.
Yes.
Is that good? Effective January 10th.
Okay, and so that will in turn, will that end the stipend on January 9th for Mr. Mabe?
Yes, it should.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, that's good. Yeah, it will end the stipend for Tori on January 9th and appointment will be effective on January 10th for Eddie McGee. Okay, any further questions, discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Passes unanimously. Unless there's any other business, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.